By a four to zero with Councilmember Suen absent vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Barber versus the City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case number in the City Council meeting agenda. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting at 6:02 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, June the 26th, 2024. It is 6:02 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, June 28th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, June 30th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call, starting with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
I will note that Councilmember Suen is absent. Vice Mayor Brewer.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would our Vice Mayor please read the land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Meowak, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite Chief Davis, if he would lead us this evening.
We have our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, at this time, let's see approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Clerk.
Under Section 3, the agenda is the closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, and that first being Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing June 2024
All right, let's see. A proclamation for the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2024. All right, so whereas the City of Elk Grove strives to be an inclusive community that embraces the rich diversity that makes Elk Grove a wonderful community to live, work, and play in, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+, individuals have made important and lasting contributions to our country, state, and city, and the City of Elk Grove celebrates the contributions that the LGBTQIA+ individuals make to Elk Grove's economic, cultural, and social life. And whereas each year, June 28th, marks the anniversary of Stonewall riots that gave birth to the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement in the United States, and whereas Adrian Beardo, an Elk Grove Youth Commissioner and Elk Grove Unified School District LGBTQIA+ student, is a strong advocate of legislative bills and policies that support LGBTQIA+ youth and mental health. Adrian plans to study political science in college, and whereas Pride Month seeks to increase the visibility, activism, and acceptance of all people with diverse sexualities and/or genders, and educate the public regarding issues faced by the LGBTQIA+ community so we may all be better allies. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of June 2024 LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Elk Grove, recognizes Adrian Beardo for their advocacy, and encourages all residents to work to help advance the cause of equality for all LGBTQIA+ people and their families, signed this 26th day of June 2024. So before I call up Adrian, we do have a public comment. I'd like to call up Kirk Thompson, and then we will call up Adrian to present you with this wonderful proclamation recognizing all of your great work.
Hi, I'm here to call out the hypocrisy of passing a Pride Month declaration. On April 16th, the National Institutes of Health, you all remember them, they were the people that we were told for years were the science. They put out a study showing that individuals who, quote, "individuals who underwent gender-affirming surgery" had a 12-fold higher suicide attempt risk than those who did not. In March 2024, the Mayo Clinic studied the effects of puberty blockers on young boys and found mild to severe atrophy in their testicles, which led one of the lead authors of the study to doubt the reversibility of the effects these drugs have. In other words, these boys were likely sterilized before they could even hit puberty. Another study out in Netherlands, also in April 2024, showed that most kids experiencing doubts about their gender grow out of that doubt before age 25. This backs up a study that was completed nearly 20 years ago that shows 88% of gender dysphoric kids grow out of their dysphoria as a result of puberty. That 20-year-old study also showed that nearly half of the kids who grew out of their gender dysphoria, turns out they were just gay. With our current state legislature actively pursuing policies like AB 1955, which encourages schools to treat every parent as a child abuser as long as some member of the school staff declares the kid LGBTQ. This is all in the hopes of encouraging kids to take drugs that have a high likelihood of sterilization with the potential that they may choose gender reassignment surgery, which we now know leads to a 12x higher risk of suicide. In the 2000s and early 2010s, drugging and mutilating gay people in the hopes that they would be something different than what they are, that had a name, conversion therapy. It is hypocritical for any municipality in the state of California to pass a Pride Month declaration when this state is actively encouraging young gay people to drug themselves, card themselves up, and put themselves at a 12x higher suicide risk. A Pride Month declaration at this time shows that the reality is you don't care about gay rights, you care about looking virtuous and demonstrating your own self-righteousness. And if that cost is cutting up and drugging a few gay kids, so be it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Please, this time I would like to call up Adrian Beardo, and I want to read a clause here just one more time because I think it's important. Whereas Pride Month seeks to increase the visibility, activism, and acceptance of all people with diverse sexualities and/or genders, and educate the public regarding issues faced by the LGBTQIA+ community so we may all be better allies. Adrian, would you please come up?
I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for this recognition, and I want to say that I, as a transgender youth, am extremely proud of my city and my government and my elected officials for standing up for kids like me and making it so that my identity can be heard and that I am able to thrive in a city like Elk Grove.
I'm sorry you didn't hear that. Would you like to invite up your panel? Anybody here you want to bring up? One more?
Take one.
How you doing?
Enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for your resilience.
Would you like to be part of the group? Please, please join us. Please, you all can, please. This is a celebration for everyone.
Was it them?
Trans.
Have you guys come a little bit closer?
Is it okay if my hands are on you? Yes, okay.
Have you guys come a little bit closer?
Is it okay if my hands are on you? Yes, okay.
One, two, three. I'm gonna take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Adrian, I want to thank you for your bravery, and I want to remind everyone that Elk Grove is a beautifully diverse community. We are a city. Welcome to all, to all. And you have a strong ally and champion with your mayor and council. We see you. We love you. This is your home. Anybody else want to provide comments or?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, I just, everybody has the right to their own opinion, and so I'll accept, you know, everyone's opinion. But I will say, statistics aside, everybody's individual experiences are different. And I think that's what we, the council, we stand for, is we're accepting of everyone, and we acknowledge that every family goes through their own experiences. And so I don't listen to statistics because none of those things can speak to all of your and all of our own personal experiences with our own families. So I'm so proud of this council, of the residents, and Adrian, for you being here and representing the Youth Commission tonight.
I really appreciate the comments made by the mayor and by Councilmember Suen because it's truly representative of, not only of our community as a whole, but all of our families have someone who is of the LGBTQIA+ grouping in our families. No one is immune from that. And what all of our family members who are living that lifestyle, who are born that way, the one thing that we should give them all is love, understanding, and to have their back 100% because no one wants or asks to be different from the rest of your family members. And it's important for us to have that sensitivity, to have that awareness because everyone deserves to be loved. Everyone deserves to be treated with love and respect. And I'm very proud of Adrian to be here tonight because I've known Adrian and his family for many years. And the courage that it takes to show that we can all live our lives with dignity, we can all live our lives with respect, but more importantly, we can live our lives is a testament to not only to you and your family, but a strong testament to our community that we are truly respectful and truly engaged in the human experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
All right, well, so I'll probably get some criticism for this because people often say that I like to cherry pick from the Bible, but I like to cherry pick the good stuff. I like to cherry pick the stuff that means something to people. There's something that's known as the 11th commandment. Jesus said to his followers, "Love one another as I have loved you." Plain and simple. Makes it easy. It's about love for other people. It's about giving everyone peace, love, and respect. That's where I am with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Robles?
Adrian, keep smiling, keep thriving. I mean, if you look at our group, if you look in the, you know, out there, this is diversity. This is Elk Grove at its finest. Again, put everything aside, we're all human beings, and we're all here to succeed, so keep doing what you're doing, keep leading the way. Young activists are going to continue going, and I'm excited to see that you're going to be going into political science and looking forward to seeing the great things you're going to do.
Thank you. Can we do another round of applause for Adrian? All right, thank you. Next up, Item 4.2 is our summer, the Civic Summer presentation. Presentation Carlos Garcia and the Participants of the Civic Summer Program.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tian Tran, and I'm an incoming junior at Elk Grove High School. Go herd. I would like to begin by thanking you on behalf of the participants of Elk Grove Civic Summer for giving us the opportunity to meet and speak with leading members of our community and local government like City Manager Jason Bearman, Police Chief Bobby Davis, and the Director of Public Works Jeffrey Warner. Elk Grove is a relatively new but growing city that is home to an aspiring young generation that is fortunate enough to have great leaders such as yourselves who we can look up to. In the past week and a half that I've been a part of Elk Grove Civic Summer, I've learned many valuable lessons and made so many new friends. I've learned just how complex our city is with its many departments that make it the city to be, utilizing innovative ideas to create community settings, low unemployment rates, keeping our air clean, maintaining the public safety for the citizens of Elk Grove, and ensuring seemingly simple things like traffic lights function smoothly. None of this would have been possible without your hard work, dedication, and support. So once again, I would like to express my gratitude to you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and the staff who made this program possible on a daily basis, Ms. Shandon, Ms. Tamara, Ms. Femi, Ms. Muscat, and Mr. Garcia. Thank you for all your investment in us. Now, at this time, I'd like to present our next speaker.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Madam Mayor. My name is Ene Effiong. I'm a rising senior from Pleasant Grove High School in the Innovative Design and Engineering Academy. Go Eagles! Before I started this program, I was unfamiliar with the inner workings of our local government. But hearing from all of you and the many others that helped keep our wonderful city running has not only taught me all about the moving parts of our local government, but has also established a newfound pride within me. So much has gone into transforming this previously rural town into a vibrant, enriching community that I am now proud to call home. Civic Summer is a wonderful program for local teens to be involved in civic processes and engaged in the community. This past week has instigated important discussions, discussions that are imperative to have considering that we are the leaders of the future, and your leadership is inspiring. Thank you so much for your dedication to the City of Elk Grove and your continued support for the Elk Grove Civic Summer program. I'd like to pass it on to the next representative.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ommimo Oringzabe. I'm a rising senior at Coseminus Oaks High School and a proud representative of the medical pathway. Go Wolf Pack! On behalf of Elk Grove Civic Summer, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for your valuable times for these past two weeks. Thanks to this wonderful opportunity, I was able to meet some of the amazing leaders of Elk Grove who keep the gears of this great city turning, as well as building connections with inspiring young adults. In just two weeks, this program has encouraged my colleagues and I to become risk takers, from taking a risk in answering a question and possibly providing the wrong answer, to taking a risk in speaking in front of a large audience with the possibility of freezing at the spot. I wouldn't be where I am today if these amazing speakers hadn't encouraged me to become a risk taker and take whatever opportunities come my way. You miss 99% of the shots you make. You will miss 100% of the shots you don't, and that if you fail, fail trying. We, the students of Elk Grove Civic Summer, are immensely grateful to all of our guest speakers. Your dedication to our growth has etched itself to the fabric of our lives. Thank you. I'd like to pass it on to the next representative.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jonathan Quong, and I am a rising senior at Franklin High School. Go Wildcats! I believe it would be an understatement to sum up the Civic Summer experience as just an opportunity. Just like a community itself, this program is founded upon people with a sense of togetherness, passion, and a dedication to making their home a better place. That dedication is the key component. The one quality that I found within the stories of each guest speaker and the one quality that motivates us student interns to educating ourselves on the inner workings of Elk Grove. However, I realize this sense of leadership is not limited to those with a prestigious position. Inspired by Kevin Spees's and Darren Swin's speech, I discovered that all it takes to start a movement is to have the courage to stand out. One follower is all that is needed to transform a person's initiative into a development. I am grateful that the product of your initiative was this internship opportunity and the proud flourishing city that we all live in. Thank you, and I will turn it to the next representative.
Good evening, respected Councilmembers and Madam Mayor. Here representing the path of Elk Grove Civic Summer, which led to a broad enlightening guidance and knowledge about the city. First, we'd like to thank you all for contributing your valuable time for us, teaching us how the city works and who runs it. Myself, Ishan Singh, a rising senior at Sheldon High School. Go Huskies! I moved to USA from India four years ago, but my goals have always been to help others, just like our Madam Mayor said in one of her interviews, that we need a mayor who believes in service before self. Primarily, my goal is to become a cardiologist and open an hospital which is affordable. I'll seek health, not wealth. I am lucky to have parents with similar insights as me. One thing that was common in every guest speaker was that they all are here for a service, and they all carry an aura of super positivity. I believe that that's all it takes to improve and balance the city. And we will always remember Mr. Kevin's first follower video. These two weeks were astonishing. Number one thing you should do in the summer must be the Elk Grove Civic Summer. Every minute of the seminar was inspiring. How the governments run the city, the main people, past and the future of the city, I've learned a lot. But most importantly, I met great personalities, my peers, teachers, and obviously the guest speakers. Thanks to all the guest speakers who enlightened us students, my classmates taught me how to be a great classmate. I'd like to pass it on to our next speaker. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Naveya Sanchez, and I am a rising senior at Franklin High School. Go Wildcats! And when I was in elementary school, my teacher assigned us a worksheet that asked the question, "What do you want to be?" And although many of us at that age may have thought of the possible careers that best suited our interests, I ultimately wrote on that line that I wanted to be a good human. And here at Civic Summer, we are learning just that. In fact, we have gained profound insights into the qualities that make a good human: leadership, engagement, and kindness. From the guest speakers, we have learned the value of active speaking. From visiting City Hall, we have learned the importance of involvement. And from sharing our ideas with each other during discussions, we have learned the significance of discussions, communication, and collaboration. Although our time here at Civic Summer isn't over just yet, the two-week seminar has truly done wonders for all of us, providing us with the gift of courage. This unique program has helped us step out of our comfort zones, ask questions, and ultimately find our voices, the voices that will contribute to the transformation of this growing community. On behalf of everyone here at Civic Summer, I want to once again say thank you. Thank you for providing us with this opportunity, an opportunity for growth, exploration, getting involved, and becoming good humans. And given the fact that this year marks Civic Summer's 10-year anniversary, thank you for your support for all these years. Civic Summer looks forward to many years to come. In closing, Ishan would like to read a poem that he created that illustrates his gratitude for this community. Thank you.
The house that our city is standing on, the council member are those pillars. Whenever the challenge appears as potholes, the council members act as those fillers. You could get to this house through Civic Summer, saying no to the vacation. I'm proud to standing among the ones who in future will become this house's foundation. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia here too? Mr. Garcia, are you out there? There you are. I just want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you. You know, you all sent me this beautiful video last Tuesday. It was my birthday, and that was just the best gift that I could get on my birthday, was this group video of everyone singing "Happy Birthday." Yes, you all were there too, but it's the students that mattered, and it was very special. So I just really want to thank you for making that day more special because of all of your engagement. You are our future, and just hearing the eloquence of all of you speaking this evening, I'm very proud of you. And just continue to stay involved. And I have no doubt that all of you, you will pursue and you will succeed in the goals that you pursue. And some of you may be sitting right here in the coming years as well. So please continue to stay actively engaged, reach out to me. I would still like to either have an opportunity to visit before this is over, if not, we'll make arrangements afterwards. But this is an important first step that you're doing, and I know you're going to be very successful, obviously not only in high schools, but of course in the college and career that you all pursue. So just a round of applause. I just could not be more proud. Thank you. Anybody want to, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to just echo her sentiments, the eloquence here, but also all that you have learned. Again, my kids don't listen to me, so I'm happy some kids do listen to us. But really, on a serious note, you will go out there and be very impactful to the world. And I am just so proud that all of you have your roots in Elk Grove. You are really, will be making a name for our city as you go out there and embark becoming engineers, working in the medical profession, saving lives. So thank you for your interest, and you know, keep going, sky's the limits.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for coming. I believe this is the early stages of the Civic Summer, so definitely make the most of your internships. And as you do that, remember that building relationships is the building blocks to building for your future because, like I said, the public service part will always be here. What you do for society as a whole, that's going to be your mark professionally to really improve the lives of others as you transition into this life. And so thank you again for your presentation. Thank you for being here. And continue to soak up as much as you humanly possibly can because, like I said, this is a great program to be in. I wish I had a program similar to this when I was in high school. So thank you.
Councilmember Spees?
Wow, so the class is just awesome. And I do want to bring you back to our discussion. Remember when I was talking about first follower? And the second nut, a crazy person that stands with someone when they're downtrodden? That's what it's about. And... And just remember, when you see the opportunity, because it will come, stand with that person and make sure that they know that for them, you have peace, love, and respect. So thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Rubless?
So I have not had the pleasure to meet you, but I'm super excited and super motivated. And when I do go, I'm gonna have to see how many of you guys are wearing Jordans and Nikes and all of that, because that's typically what I'm known for, for Civic Summer, is showing off the shoes and everything. But I'll have to definitely be there with, with Madam Mayor when, when she does go. I'm just looking at the calendar right now. I'm probably gonna have to crash someone's, someone's, one of your public speakers, but I'm looking forward to it. For all you that just are doing the amazing work in the summer, you guys are giving up some of your free time to be here. Please continue doing that. I can't wait to see you guys up here one of these days, making our laws and making our stuff, so thank you.
Congratulations once again. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is our public comment. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We will start with Liz Marshall, followed by Joyce Lee.
Mayor, City Council, we are all here to request the city do what the Attorney General has told you to do. Forget Coral Blossom, approve Oak Grove Apartments on Elk Grove Boulevard. You've been told by the city attorney, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as Rob Bonta, the California State General Attorney, that Oak Grove Apartments meet objective standards for SB thirty-five and should be approved. Your refusal to approve the project has cost Elk Grove taxpayers a whopping nine-point-two million dollars and counting. That's a lot of money, and there is nothing to show for it. It has caused the state's attorney general to file a lawsuit against the city telling you to comply, but you resist. You've met with his office, he's holding firm, you resist. Bonta has sent you a letter and used his public platform to warn you to comply, and you resist. This is a losing cause. There is no way the Attorney General's office is going to let little old Elk Grove show them up on the California state stage, not with all these other cities watching. Not gonna happen. Quit making Elk Grove look bad, stop violating the law, and comply. We understand that permanent supportive housing is a subject that gets people upset for a variety of reasons, us included. But that is exactly why the state put SB thirty-five in place, so cities and neighborhoods can't block these types of projects. You, as city elected leaders, are required to follow the state law regardless of your personal feelings. You took an oath. That oath requires you to approve Oak Grove Apartments on Elk Grove Boulevard. While it might sting a little bit at first, it will be nothing compared to the sting you're about to get if you get, if you, from Rob Bonta's office, if you challenge him in court. Now we hear grumblings from some about the senior housing project you're trying to approve at Elk Grove Boulevard. We can solve that problem for you. We would love to have that project at eighty-four eighty-four Elk Road, Elk Grove Florin, or maybe even a library. The, there are some residents in Elk Grove who expect you to pull a rabbit out of your hat. We don't expect magic, we expect compliance. It's time to quit wasting millions of taxpayer dollars and put Elk Grove on the right side of the law. We would appreciate a meeting to discuss this further with you. You have my contact information, and all of us are willing to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joyce Lee, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, Council and Mayor. Unfortunately, the lady already spoke about what I was going to speak about. I didn't realize she did, but I, I just want to add something to that.
I'm sorry, can we have it quiet here? We have someone speaking? We have somebody speaking. Please give her the courtesy and respect so we can hear her. Thank you.
She spoke on the same issue as I am, the first lawsuit on Oak Apartment. I would like to know where the money came from, how it was spent, attorney fees, whatever. Is there an auditing process that goes through to make sure we're not overspending or mismanaging the money? I don't know how that process looks like, but I'm pretty sure someone will be able to tell me that. And then as far as SB thirty-five, Rob Bonta's suit, I understand that we're going to court on that, and a court date has been set. I'm not sure if that's the right way to go, or if we're gonna negotiate a deal with him or not, but I'd like to hear from somebody regarding what that process looks like. And again, where is the money coming from? Is it coming from our general funds or whatever? Third issue that I'd like to talk about is the new affordable housing projects that are being projected. If you go to them, and I wish each and every one of you would go to them and see how people actually live. I grew up in the projects. I'm a hot mess, okay? I can tell you what that environment looks like, what it feels like, and the behavior pattern you object to on a daily basis. Safety is an issue, and I look forward to that problem being secured and taken care of. The one I'm concerned about that we haven't developed now is Sheldon Farms North. Two-hundred-and-eighty units, seven buildings, four stories high, no additional parking, no amenities there, kind of concerned that maybe the task force or somebody can get together and maybe calm down the, the process. The issue is our method of procedure that the council has, has us backed up. We're not being proactive as, as members out here, we're being reactive. We don't know what's coming forward, so we're reacting to something that's already happening. I'd like to see us be a little more proactive, and doing so, maybe each council member can have a, a district event in their area. I never seen this here, and maybe you can talk to some of the people and figure out what your community actually wants and what they need. The quality of life is so important to people that look like me and act like me, that we need to make the adjustment. If we don't do it now, we get it on the other end. Behavior modification is based on consequences. The jails are full of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Lee, could you please, when I had texted you back, I had asked for your email. Could you leave your email address with the clerk? Because the Sheldon Farms lady wants to get in touch with you about that event.
Okay, the only problem with that is my, it won't be up until probably the end of the week, because I have Comcast coming back out there.
Are you okay with me giving her your phone number?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
I think it's July ninth.
July ninth? Do you know what time it is?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Nobody can tell me what time.
He'll connect with you afterwards.
Six, six P M.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Spees will connect with you on that, including the various other items that you raised. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Kirk Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Happy birthday, Mayor. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Brewer. June birthdays. I'm here tonight to, and I'm gonna follow up with what she had to say, because I've been coming to the meetings since two thousand and one. Most of the decisions have been made way before it comes to council, and so only those neighborhoods that were most active could even hear about projects coming forth. And my experience in sitting here observing is most of the decisions are made before a vote's even taken. And I know, and I've been told it's futile to speak, but I guess I'm a nut, and I'm gonna keep speaking up at meetings about things and hoping eventually some small changes will be made that will make it better for everyone living in Elk Grove. So I've been thinking about something for a very long time. When we had District Fifty-Six designed, I went to all the meetings, and I can't tell from a map where everything is. And I kept talking to them about the distance from the parking lot to the front door of the senior center. I said, is that really close? Because we have seniors with wheelchairs and walkers. We have heat here, we have rain here. It will not help people if they have to go a long distance to get through that front door, and actually, people will probably stop coming. So I've been going to the senior center and frustrated with what I see when individuals with walkers that are just trying to get out to the parking lot. So I've come up with a solution. We have water issues. There's a big, huge grass patch to the east of the senior center that's watered, and it is mowed. We could easily take that out, put in some nice pavers that are parkable, and open that area for our seniors, and maybe be able to invite some of those back that out of frustration have stopped going. It would also help our veterans. Many of our veterans are disabled, and it is such a long distance to get to those front doors. Every time I've gone over there, I've been angry about this, because I kept bringing it up over and over and over, and I was assured that it was gonna be okay. Now, planning, whoever else was involved may not have seniors that have walkers or wheelchairs, may not have ever been in that position. But if you've been in that position, from the parking lot to that front door is a great distance. And our seniors that are in walkers and wheelchairs and somewhat isolated need to be able to get out and be involved in our community. I hope in the CIP that you could look at doing something like that and really improve the quality of life. That's what Measure E monies were about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Kirk Thompson.
Well, this is the first time I've been into the city council meeting in a while. I've been trying to follow along as best I can the last couple of months, and I wanted to address some of the more contentious issues that caught my attention. Well, I was gonna mention the housing, but I think we've beaten that to death even just today, and I'm sure it's been, it's been discussed quite a bit. And the people that have actually discussed it up here are obviously way more informed on it than I am, and I really should be more so, from the sounds of it. The first thing I want to, want to talk about is, you know, I heard we're getting drones. So I saw a video, Chief, of the, of the drones. They look pretty cool. Now, I know residents in Elk Grove love their illegal fireworks on Fourth of July, and it has been a bit of a problem for many people, but Chief, don't you think drones are a little bit of overkill? I mean, I grew up in North Idaho, so just as a warning, if you fly drones over a private fireworks display, you might not get that drone back. Just saying, all right? Also, drone surveillance, on a serious note, drone surveillance will be a subject of potential Supreme Court lawsuits on the Fourth Amendment grounds soon, so tread lightly on that, please. The final thing I wanted to mention was the zoo. I love the idea of the Sacramento Zoo being in Elk Grove. I always dread taking my kids to the current SAG Zoo because of the parking situation. My kids are rambunctious, which I know is not abnormal, so I always worry about them running in the street and stuff like that. So I am, I'm happy that it could be coming closer to home. However, even with my limited knowledge of finance, the math just doesn't seem to math. So I'm grateful to Mr. Spees for acknowledging that issue and calling it out for potential discrepancies in funding and financing the zoo, uh, zoo project. The money has to be there. And the long-term cost has to be of net benefit to the taxpayers of Elk Grove. And one more thing on the zoo, if you need some kangaroos, I hear there's some courtrooms in Manhattan, seem to be run by them, so you might want to reach out, all right?
Always a pleasure, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, and that was our final public comment. I do, out of respect to the speakers that did come regarding Coral Blossom, and there seems to be a lot of misinformation, so I do have a prepared statement that I would like to read for those that are still here or those that may be tuning in. First and foremost, please subscribe to our newsletter. If you're not getting timely information, you just go on, on our city website, elkgrovecity.org, subscribe to the newsletter so that you can be a part of the process, a very transparent process that includes several opportunities to engage with many facets of what takes place in the city of Elk Grove. But I will read this statement. The location for the Coral Blossom Project is zoned for multifamily housing and is included in the city's regional housing needs allocation, or known as RENA, list identifying it as a planned location for affordable housing. The site was added to the RENA list in twenty-fourteen. Mailed notices were sent to residents with five-hundred feet prior, prior to adding the site to the list in twenty-fourteen. The project application was submitted under Senate Bill Thirty-Five and recently enacted state law that limits the discretionary authority of city officials in considering or approving qualifying housing projects. Under SB Thirty-Five, the city is limited to reviewing projects against objective standards without application of personal or subjective judgment. Permanent supportive housing is a model that combines housing, healthcare, and supportive services to help formerly, formerly homeless individuals lead more stable lives. Supportive housing is intended as long-term housing. It is not a homeless shelter, not transitional housing, and not a residential treatment center. The city has prepared a webpage about the project with a number of frequently asked questions regarding the project, SB Thirty-Five, permanent supportive housing, and other related items. These can be found on the Elk Grove City website, elkgrovecity.org, and typing Coral Blossom in the search. With that, we will go on to our next item, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Several items to report on. First, I'll, maybe I'll start with a couple of affordable housing projects that were mentioned this evening. The first is the Adobe Communities is going to be holding a couple of different workshops to discuss the Sheldon Farms North Project, which is a two-hundred-and-forty-unit affordable housing project. The first session will be July ninth at six o'clock on Zoom, and then the next day, July tenth, there will be an in-person meeting, also at six o'clock, at the Valley High North Laguna Library. Information about that project and these meetings can be found on the website at adobe abodecommunities.org slash Sheldon Farms. And then the Mutual Housing Project, the Senior Affordable Housing Project in Old Town, which is an eighty-nine unit project, is also having a third workshop on July seventeenth at five-thirty at the Elk Grove Library Facility. So everybody is encouraged to attend and learn more about those affordable housing projects. Pleased to announce that on June thirteenth, the Economic Development Office awarded a ten-thousand-dollar grant to two G auto motor, marking a major milestone for the city's Permit Assistance Smart Start Program. Its program has provided more than a hundred thousand dollars in support to local small business since its launch in two thousand and twenty-one. Thirty-nine small businesses have received assistance with city planning and building permit fees for brick and mortar storefronts. The Bias Inside Us, a Smithsonian Institution project, is in Elk Grove for a special limited time engagement through July twelfth. The traveling exhibit is presented by the Elk Grove Unified School District and the city to increase awareness of implicit bias and its impact. Exhibit is open Monday through Saturdays, ten A M. to five P M. at Elizabeth Pinkerton Middle School, which is at eighty-three sixty-five White Light Parkway. Admission is free. Enjoy water slides, frozen treats, and an afternoon of fun at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center tomorrow, June twenty-seventh. From eleven-thirty to three-thirty, the first fifty attendings will receive a free beach bag. Admission is eight dollars for those ages five and up, and five dollars for those two through four years of age. The Special Waste Collection Center, also known as the SWAC, celebrated its tenth anniversary earlier this year. Tonight's consent calendar includes an agreement with Clean Harbors and Environmental Services that would expand facilities' operating hours to include Saturdays. This change is proposed to increase the availability of the service to residents on the weekends. Pending council approval, the SWAC will begin to operate on Saturday through Wednesday, nine A M. to four P M. beginning on July first. Excited to announce that barbecue in the Beat is back. Please join the police department at Johnson Park, eighty, at ninety-six forty-five Lake Point Drive, this Saturday, June twenty-ninth, from eleven to two P M. for a free barbecue lunch. Games and vehicle and equipment displays, Kasumnas CSD Fire, is bringing equipment to the event is in Beat One. More of these events will occur throughout the summer. Please follow the police department's social media accounts for details. The city and Kasumnas CSD Fire are hosting a fireworks amnesty event this Saturday, June twenty-ninth, from ten A M. to two P M. at Fire Station Seventy-One, which is at eighty-seven sixty Elk Grove Boulevard. Residents can turn in their illegal fireworks for proper destruction, no questions asked. Elk Grove has been a community since eighteen fifty, but we became a city officially on July first, two thousand, as we recognize another year. 2000, as we recognized another year of incorporation on Monday. We can be proud of what the community has accomplished over the past 24 years and commit ourselves to an even brighter future, or host our unofficial birthday party at Elk Grove Park next Thursday at the Red, White, and Blue Fireworks Event. So speaking of that, we're excited to host another great celebration full of food, fun, and fireworks, beginning at 5:00 p.m. on the Fourth itself. That will include Let Freedom Ride Pedal Parade at 6:00, opening ceremonies are at 7:00 p.m., a free concert featuring Agents of Rock at 7:30, and of course, the fireworks show. Mission is free, parking inside is $10. I want to thank our program partners, Kasumnas CSD and Sky River Casino, and a lot of other businesses, and of course, staff who make this event possible, and the council's support as well. Details on some of the road closures will be announced later this week on the city's website. Just almost done here. We have a little few more things to talk about because we're missing our next meeting, so that's one of the other items. We do traditionally skip the first meeting in July, and that will be the case this year, so we will not have a July 10th meeting. Our next meeting will be on July 24th. And between now and then, they also have one other event, which is the Blues in the Grove. Make plans to join us for Blues in the Grove at District 56 on Sunday, July 21st, from noon to 6:30. Tickets are on sale for this indoor show featuring some of the region's biggest blues acts hosted by the Elk Grove Arts Commission. Tickets are $40. Information is available on the city's website. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for that excellent report. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Consent calendar at this time. I will open up the public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up for consent. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please. 8.1, a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the report of delinquent public nuisance, abatement, and sidewalk repair costs and authorizing their collection on the Sacramento County 2024-2025 tax roll.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. My name is Jose Mendez. I'm your code enforcement manager. Item 8.1 is requesting consideration and adoption of a resolution for special assessment of delinquent public nuisance, abatement, and sidewalk repair costs. This item is an annual request by code enforcement and Public Works to submit a new and direct levy to impose special assessments on delinquent parcels for public nuisance, abatement, and sidewalk repair costs for fiscal year 2024, excuse me, 2024 to 2025. For fiscal year 2024-25, staff requests consideration to tax roll $2,587 in public nuisance abatement costs. You may note that the amount reflected in my presentation differs from the amount in the staff report, and that's because payment was received by two property owners this week, reducing the total requested amount. Additionally, staff is requesting to tax roll $16,373.43 in sidewalk repair costs. You may also know that that differs from the staff report, and that's because one property owner has paid a certain amount, reducing the total amount. That brings the grand total to $18,960.43 for both code enforcement and Public Works costs. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving the report of delinquent public nuisance, abatement, and sidewalk repairs, and authorize their collection on the SAC County tax roll for fiscal year 24-25. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is closed. Any questions? If not, I will look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item. A public hearing to consider a resolution determining to levy street maintenance assessments in Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3-AP, Eastern Area, Annexation Number 53 for Calvine Point Arco AMPM.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Vijay Misriya, financial analyst for the city. I'm here this evening to present proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development's project approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. The project we have tonight, council adopted resolutions of intent on May 8th, 2024, into appropriate special tax districts and to establish today's public hearing. The project is proposed for annexation into the following special tax district, Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3. This is the 53rd annexation into Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3. This project was previously annexed into CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 back in August 28th of 2019. This assessment will be levied in perpetuity. The project is Calvine Point Arco AMPM, which consists of 2.35 non-residential acres located southwest of Elk Grove Flureen Road and Calvine Road. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, our screen suddenly has gone black. It's being fixed. It was never there. Okay, excellent. All right. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up. I'll close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is closed, and request the clerk to provide results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of three possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the properties. Three affirmative votes for return. The ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described before the parcel identified in the ballot. Resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
All right, thank you for that. If I don't have any questions, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item. A public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2024 to 25 through 2028-29.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Christina Castro, we're Capital Programs Division Manager, here tonight to open the public hearing and adopt adoption consideration of the capital improvement program for fiscal year 24 through 29. The draft document was presented to the council on May 22nd. The draft, or on June 12th, the staff presented the draft's fiscal year 24 budget, which included four project revisions. Those revisions are incorporated in this final CIP, and no additional changes are proposed. So I will be available for questions following the public comment.
Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I like charts, and I like circles, and I see that to get our projects done, we depend on a lot of grant money. So I want to thank staff for their hard work on trying to get grant money so we can get some of these projects done. One of the projects that's been a priority project since 2007 is Whitelock Interchange. So for 17 years, we've put in money to getting that done to pull the traffic off of Elk Grove Boulevard. Now, we have Camera Road. It's a priority project. I don't believe Wilton Rancheria or our zoo people will appreciate if it takes 17 years to get that project done. However, I think the people that live near Whitelock would appreciate it to have this done because there is so much more traffic on Civic Center Drive, trying to avoid some of that. Second thing I want to talk about is we've funded $100,000 for a consultant for a rain garden. Okay, I recognize we're losing our current rain garden, but we don't have any information from when we did the studies on this established rain garden that we need to fund a consultant for $100,000 to design another one for us? That just doesn't make sense to me. Lastly, because it won't be talked about, is we, of course, have water issues, and some people in the know know about the Harvest Water Project, and that was to bring water out to the farmland. I've been going to meetings, and I've been bringing up that Elk Grove is looking to expand, and where that farmland is, covering it with houses. So how will that Harvest Water Project really work? Well, here it is, toilet to tap. And they got tired of me bringing this up at every meeting. Now I hear, well, not now, but in the future. And so I see that we're working on this future plan. I believe it's going to happen. I'm putting it out there right now, and I'd like the people that are paying for this to be aware that this is what's going on, and this is where our money's going to, and this is the future of our area as we develop. So lots of money going towards that. Recycled water transmission line. We're putting in a pump station. This is to help us establish the last cycle for tertiary water so that we can put it through the pipes of houses. I know what's happening. I'm a nut, and I can be told that I'm wrong about this, but I'm seeing it going on. So when we talk about being transparent with taxpayer money, we really aren't. You have to figure it out, and only those that don't have a life get an opportunity to figure it out when they're putting the pieces together. It's solving a puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final speaker, so I will declare that the public hearing is closed. If there are no questions, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to just address Ms. Wheat's comment because I think Whitelock Interchange and Camera Road are both high priority projects, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Werner about this being shovel-ready Whitelock Interchange versus Camera Road in terms of why we're ready to fund Camera.
Well, you're certainly correct in that those are both high priority projects, both identified by the city council and certainly regionally as well. You know, we continue to work on both projects. We're a little bit further along with Camera Road currently. We have a large grant application out for that one as well, and then Whitelock's kind of going through the environmental process. That, just a reminder, Camera labored in for a long time, and that project's been around for decades in and of itself.
Right.
So that's kind of where they stand. We continue to work diligently on both projects and are hopeful to bring both to a reality.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to highlight that Camera is just farther along in the process, so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, I'd make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9.1. Consider a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024-25, setting the annual appropriations limit, adopting the fiscal year 2024-25 investment policy, and adopting an updated citywide salary schedule.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Nate Bagwell, I serve as your budget manager. This is a continuation of a discussion that we started on May 22nd, when the city manager, Jason Bearman, provided a preview of the fiscal year budget for the upcoming fiscal year 24-25. We made a presentation a couple weeks ago, and we had a chance to have some dialogue about that. This evening, we're bringing the item back for further consideration and to vote on this, hopefully, and happy to answer any questions you may have or receive in any direction subsequent to public comment.
All right, thank you for that. I will open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I will go ahead and close public comment opportunity. Any questions? We will start with councilmember Sueon.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to start off by thanking you and my council colleagues for delaying this to give me the opportunity to weigh in and vote. I wanted to quickly also thank staff. I watched the video presentation, so again, the sentiments of my colleagues, really appreciate all the work that you all put in to this document. I also agreed with Councilmember Spees in terms of his question about the gas tax. I had a very similar question when I heard the presentation, so appreciate Councilmember Spees for bringing that up. And then finally, or almost finally, I also agreed with Ms. Wheat's comment about maybe perhaps there's something we can do to screen some of those walls. I thought IV was a good idea, but I appreciated Vice Mayor Brewer's response as well, that maybe it might get away from us. But that is a creative solution, so I look forward to investigating what we could do to make sure that graffiti artists don't have a palate, if you will. And then finally, this finally, I just wanted to say that that budget reflects our investments in public safety, maintaining or keeping a handle on our homeless population, bolstering and maintaining infrastructure, and securing economic development communities for the city. And I know all of you said some form and fashion of that as well, but I also just want to get that on record. So if it's okay, I would just go ahead and like to make the motion adopted, since you waited for me to do this after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, in 30 seconds, just do a quick budget highlights for those who may be just tuning in for the first time. Fifteen new positions, including four funded from Measure E, and seven conversions from contractors to city staff positions. Enhanced policing efforts expanding the youth services team, adding positions related to training and commercial vehicle enforcement, as well as new positions in dispatch. Enhanced economic development initiatives focused on workforce development, small business, and startup support, as well as support for Project Elevate and Grant Line Business Park. Increased funding for housing and homelessness support. New Laguna Bridge and Southeast Policy Area Parks. Elk Grove Library Construction Project. Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Crossing at State Route 99. And finally, Traffic Signal Enhancement and Congestion Relief Project. Just as a quick summation. So we have a motion? Any questions, comments? I think a lot of us already spoke about this, so can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And pardon me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I think you're all flying in the dark up at the dais, and with staff, we were going to ask if we could just take a brief pause. What it would give is an ability for us to do what's famous in IT, which is known as turn everything off and turn it back on again.
All right, and a reboot.
Reboot.
But I think it should only take about five minutes. So I mean, if we just take a brief pause and come back at 7:15, that would be great. For the sake of staff, I would just recommend you still run through your power. As the mayor said, if you're just a little bit more demonstrative, perhaps verbally in your words, and with less reliance on the item itself.
Perpetual dance or something?
But this would take us back, and we'd be kicking back on with item 9.2.
Yeah, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Christopher Jordan. Going to tag team this item for you this evening. I'll be joined in a minute by Sam Grimm from our Capital Improvement Program team. But tonight is a couple of action items for your consideration. First, there's a cost-sharing agreement with the Sacramento Zoological Society for Phases 1A, 1B of the new zoo project. We also, now that you've adopted the budget for next year and the forthcoming five-year CIP, we're going to be asking for some amendments to that so that we can start integrating the zoo project in and begin the funding for the next round of design work. And then we have contracts for your consideration with the design team, SHR Studios, and Kimley Horan Associates. You'll recall that back on May 8th of last month, you approved the overall design plan for the zoo project itself. You also reviewed the financing plan and provided direction to staff on the draft terms for the cost-sharing agreement that we're back with for you this evening. Obviously, you cannot see this slide, which has all of the overall site plan. I was not going to go through it in a lot of detail, so we can easily skip over that. But of course, the site overall, 63 acres inside the fence line, 100 acres, a little more over the entire site, with parking facilities, off-site roadways, sewer water improvements, and everything else. So big, complex project and multiple phases to it. So the cost-sharing agreement that's before you this evening, I'll go through some of the overall terms that are outlined in your staff report. Feel free to follow along in there if that's easier, if you have it. The agreement this evening will only cover Phases 1A and 1B of the new zoo. This is the first phase of delivery that includes all the key facilities, backup house operations, and the core elements around the Africa habitats. Under the agreement, we talk about that the city and society intend to we talk about that the city and society intend to enter into a future use and operating agreement for the project, essentially a lease operating agreement that will bring back at a future point in time. We do set the overall project budget based upon the finance plan you saw last month at about $302 million. Ultimately, if the project is terminated by the city prior to the receipt of the bond funds, which we talked about those in the finance plan last month, about $114 million in bond financing we'll need to secure for the project overall. So prior to those issuance, to the issuance of those bonds, if the city ultimately does decide to terminate the project, any donor contributions that are on deposit with the city would be returned to the society. In terms of the funding obligations, the society is obligated to secure the $50 million we talked about last month, and it's on the schedule of milestones, which I know you cannot see on your screen, but it begins with $12.5 million that was due or obligated by May 8th of this year, which we talked about last month, the society has achieved. The next tranche of funds totaling cumulatively $17.5 million is due January 1st of next year, and ultimately by January 1 of '27 is the $50 million obligation. The city and society will also be cooperating on securing additional $30 million towards the energy efficiency and animal care components of the project. We will be working with the society to establish a process for the acceptance of third-party in-kind donations of, say, materials or other goods that would be useful in the delivery of the project overall that could count towards that collective $80 million obligation. The city may suspend the design work along the way if the society fails to achieve any of the minimum funding milestone commitments that are laid out between now and January 1st of 2027. We have that ability to do that in order to slow the project down and wait for that funding, those funding milestones to be achieved. The society's other funding obligations, any donor funds that are committed or that come through after January 1st of '27 would be accounted for on a discounted basis based upon net present value calculation with a 4% discount. That way, we're recognizing the time value of money of those funds. Funds that are received by the society, the actual cash themselves, needs to be transferred to the city on a quarterly basis beginning of October 1st of this year. So part of your resolution will be establishing that fund itself. As part of the resolution, as those funds come in, the finance director will be authorized to recognize those funds coming in and do automatic adjustments to the city's budget and the financial system to recognize those additional dollars. The society is responsible for transferring, though, the full $50 million prior to the issuance of the bond funds later in '27. If there is any debt financing that's utilized to secure any portion of that $50 million obligation, the society would be solely responsible for the repayment of that debt. Again, we do have the bond plan for the project, about $114 million in total. As we talked about last month, the society will be responsible for paying back 32% of that payment, of the annual debt service payments going forward. Under this agreement, the society's first payment will be due on the one-year anniversary or 12 months after the opening of the zoo to the public. But overall, the society is responsible for a total of 30 annual payments back to the city. So that concludes the terms of the agreement. I'll go ahead and hand it off to Sam now, who's going to walk through the budget amendments, the CIP amendments, and the contracts.
All right, thank you, CJ. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Sam Grimm, senior civil engineer in the capital program, and I'm pleased to present our CIP and budget amendments along with the design contracts tonight. First up, we have our CIP amendment. We are proposing to create a new project designation, WZO, within our current community enhancement program. All work performed by the city will be tracked under this designation. The first project we have is program management and fees. This standalone project will cover program oversight, master scheduling, and payment of associated impact fees, which are estimated at around $8.5 million. Next up, we have the onsite improvements, which covers the zoo itself, and that's our largest individual project. So everything within the perimeter fence line. Actually, we have roadways and parking lots, followed by our stormwater basin and utility extensions necessary to support the zoo. This specific division of projects will allow for detailed cost tracking and efficient management of funding sources. I'll note here that our total budget is consistent with the cost estimate provided in the financing plan. In this case, we have excluded the $1.7 million spent to date by the society on design services. Our new WZO program is funded from a variety of fund sources, matching the total of our CIP projects at just over $300 million. A few items to note here, the external agency fund will cover the reimbursements for utility work with SCWA and SAC Sewer. The new proposed zoo partner fund, which CJ just mentioned, covers the society's $50 million obligation, as well as the $30 million cooperative fundraising goal between the city and the society for energy efficient, energy efficiency items and animal care components, the Animal Care Hospital. Lastly, we have programmed the zoo bond issuance, subject to future council action, as a placeholder of funds only. See that at just over $114 million. The vast majority of these bond funds are programmed in fiscal year '26-'27, when we anticipating needing those funds for onsite construction. All right. So the corresponding budget needs here are what represents our ask for fiscal year '24-'25 for the WZO program at just over $18 million. This represents our first year of the five-year CIP needs for our program. Our first activities with this budget will include kicking off the next phase of design work. Which takes us to our design contracts. SHR Studios provides professional architectural and engineering services. They will lead the design of the onsite facilities, so everything within that perimeter fence. SHR was selected through a competitive process by the society to perform conceptual and schematic design. They specialize in the design of zoological parks around the world. SHR has a deep understanding of this project and can efficiently and effectively continue to the next phase of design. We've seen a lot of their beautiful work so far in some of the past presentations. Kimley Horn provides professional engineering design services. They will lead the design of the off-site infrastructure, including roadways, intersections, storm drain facilities, and utilities. Kimley Horn was selected in 2022 from an existing city master services contract to perform schematic roadway and utility design for the zoo. That selection was based on a solicitation and review of qualifications and proposals from which Kimley Horn was the most qualified. They are also well-equipped to efficiently and effectively continue the design work to the next phase. Both of these design contracts are structured as master services agreements that cover a broad range of services and include hourly rates. Individual task orders will be issued for each WZO project with specific scopes of work, schedules, and budgets. Our next step is to kick off this city-led design under these contracts starting July 1st. The preparation of our construction manager at risk solicitation is also underway. We continue to monitor Senate Bill 739 for our use of the C Mar project delivery model. Happy to report that I believe earlier this week, the bill passed off the assembly floor and moves next to the Senate and hopefully to the governor's desk in the short quarter. The schedule for off-site design infrastructure includes design work through the end of 2025, with construction starting in '26. That leads us into 2027. And the schedule for the onsite zoo facilities themselves, that design work will continue through the end of 2026, and construction of zoo facilities is anticipated to start in early 2027 and continue into 2030. These are the recommendations we have before you this evening. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. We have one person sign up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Thank you. I just don't know that there's been adequate transparency on this. I've been talking to people that live in the Laguna and Proppy Ridge CFDs, and they didn't realize that they'll be paying for this zoo. So this has made me really upset and very, very frustrated. And so I've had conversations with a number of people, and one that has quite a knowledge base says to me, well, it's their policy, Lynn, and everything that they're doing is legal. It's policy. Okay, so they set the policy. The people aren't knowing that they're going to be paying for it. I keep telling everybody, you're going to be paying for this. Do you understand what this picture is going to look like? And if they, the Sacramento Zoological Society, doesn't meet their obligation, we will be picking it up. Which leads me to think further. Okay, it's legal. You set the policy. That's what you get to do. You don't necessarily need to be completely transparent. The news media didn't say CFDs will be paying for this. They didn't say your bike trails, your safe bike places to ride, some of your roads. We would have the money to do all of that and catch up on that, but we believe it's more important that you all want a zoo. We can't even let the taxpayers who are going to be paying for this even vote on it. So it's not been transparent to me. And so then I think, yes, it's legal. But is it morally and ethically right? Is it morally and ethically right to come up with this? You show the pictures of the complete zoo done. This $300 million isn't the complete zoo. It's only for one faith. What are the operating costs? They're not even included. So is this the morally and ethically right thing to do? Or is this the politically right thing to do? I brought a zoo to town. We were going to have soccer stadium. We have a pool that we're in debt in. You're passing this on to the future. The young people that came here, this is going to be their bill. Is this morally and ethically right? Yes. It's your policy. It's your ambition. It's your drive, and you have all the Is and Ts dotted, and it's legal. But is it morally and ethically right not to include the people who are going to be paying for it, not to be transparent, to just sell it on everyone loves a zoo with caged animals? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment opportunity. So I will close public comment and open it up for council discussions. We'll start to the left with Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have some questions more along the lines of the schedule. I just want to, I think it's the most appropriate time to do it since we're talking about design contracts. What steps have been taken to, you know, make sure we can, I mean, what's the critical path on the schedule? What's the, is there any ability to accelerate beyond what is currently planned? I have no doubt you're trying to go as fast as you can, but if there is an opportunity to accelerate, whether it's through resourcing or, I don't, I don't know. I mean, but my question still remains, because the sooner we can get things approved and moved to construction, I think the, you know, it's more advantageous to us from a, from a financing standpoint. So just throw that out there. I don't know much what went into the schedule, the planning of the project schedule for the design.
Sure. So the, the critical path for design rests with the putting together the complete design packages for the onsite facilities. So the largest of the WZO projects, the, everything within the perimeter fence, that's the critical path for us. And that's what's going to take us through 2026. Our schedule, we've also tried to maintain consistency with the financing plan as it marches along, so that our, when we anticipate needing funds to enter construction, that matches when the terms of the financing agreement, that funds are available for us when we're ready to negotiate with our contractor and start work within the fence line.
Okay, and so in terms of plan checking, for instance, right, do we, do we, with agencies, we, not just us, but our, our partner agencies that we need to go to, have all those paths been lined up saying, hey, we have a project? Are we going to have people that are on your end to receive and expedite plan checking and comments back? So that iterative process that takes, you know, six, nine, 12 months, that we can minimize that if we need to hire more plan checkers in those agencies to accelerate, you know, making sure the focus is on this project. Are those, have those conversations and plans, have those been taken into account?
So I can jump in on that one. No, we've not had those conversations yet. I mean, in many regards, this is like a development project, or at least that's how water and sewer and smud will end up seeing this project. Those are really the big three from the agency side that we'll need to work with. Those are conversations that they're aware of the project, obviously. We've not gone through the details of the schedule with them. Those are conversations we can have. We're in a phase right now where we're still sort of at the higher level of things. I'd say we're, we're looking more for involvement in the next six months with our own building department and our fire department, or the CSD Fire Department. And so there's a lot of coordination we're doing now to get all that stuff lined up, ready to go, so they have clear standing. So that work is happening. Sam's right, though. I mean, this, this is a massive project. There are a lot of moving parts to it. I think he's done an amazing job the last two months getting up to speed and starting to lay out that strategy around it. So I want to compliment him for it. And working with the design teams about how we work progressively through the site. It's, you know, we're breaking up into four or five zones essentially, so we're bringing design development stage up for each of those, so that at that point, we can bring everything up to that construction design simultaneously. We're working on all those details. So I think we're moving as much as we can as quickly, but ultimately, the ability to go to construction is going to be reliant upon that $80 million of partner funding, that between the 50 on the society's side and jointly the 30 million, which is really a regional commitment around the project. So.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And Sam, I'll, I'll give you kudos as well. I know this is a large project, and, and the reason why I mention these things is because it's such a large project, you can tack on months very easily, as all of you know, who've done these types of things. So that's why I'm bringing that up, is, you know, we need to be looking to those agencies and making sure that we can streamline and get as, because if you're investing, you know, a few thousand dollars for, you know, extra people to look at the, our plans, to expedite the, the process, that's a drop in the bucket when you're talking 300 million, right? And I would submit to you that the sooner we can get to design approvals, I think investors, people that are interested in being, being part of this project, when they know it's closer to construction, I think that that will help with the fundraising that, that you're referring to. So they kind of feed into one another, and so having a $300 million project, you know, lagged by six, nine months, even a year because of, you know, all these agencies we're going to have to deal with, that, that could hurt, you know, our ability to fundraise. So I just want to bring that to our attention and hope that staff will just keep an eye out and have, start having these conversations now with these other sister agencies. Thank you.
Great questions and comments. Vice Mayor?
No, as the councilmember Suen, he asked all the right questions, because those were the things I've been thinking about for the last couple of weeks. And definitely appreciated the candor and responses from Mr. Grimm and, and Mr. Jordan on, on this. Because as we're looking at the timelines, we're also thinking about the off-ramps that are associated, if some of the thresholds or milestones aren't met, and what that looks like in the overall big, bigger picture, but also looking at what we would be responsible for through the financing plan and securing the bond. Because, because those are, those are the bigger tickets, the bigger picture items that will help us move forward, because collecting the $50 million is, is one gate for us to reach the actual amounts through the project financing plan is, is vital, because, because that will really help from a general contractor standpoint. And so thank you for walking us through that, and thank you for asking those questions, because those were, those were the questions that I had in mind as well.
Councilmember Spees?
All righty. Okay, so when last we met, there were, there were a few items that I was hoping to get some agreement on. And first and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues for your, your thought, your patience, your analysis, because there, some of those things are addressed in this, at least what I think to be the most important. In terms of the bond oversight committee, I believe that has been not pushed, but selected for a better time when we get closer to the bond issuance. And I think that's entirely appropriate. But I'm glad that there's a marker there for, for the consideration for that. And then I think items two and three are really tied into the, the assurance that we have, not just the $50 million from the Zoological Society, but also the $30 million from the partner agencies. And so that, I appreciate your consideration in that. And I'm happy to see that included in the staff recommendation. And I believe that's been properly vetted. And so, you know, with that, just, you know, things aren't always easy, right? And when you have to have open discussions, sometimes those are, sometimes they're messy. And so again, I'd like to thank staff for working to find a good solution. I believe, I'm, I'm kind of reading the room here, that there's probably support for it. And I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the consideration because what I know about Elk Grove Residence is that they expect us to be considerate with, with their, with their funding. And I believe that collectively, we have done that. I know you're committed to that, and I appreciate that. So with that, I'll be able to support it tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
I just want to thank staff and the Zoological Society for finding common ground and for compromising. I mean, this is essentially what, what we are here to do is compromise, but also push forward. And thankful, thankful for everything that was raised up during the other time. And now that we're here and comfortable that everybody is on, on the same page. So whenever the time is ready, let's.
All right. Thank you. Excellent comments from my colleagues. This is a long-term partnership. And so having this work product is, is the shared values and what we can do together. So I'm excited about that and definitely support this as well, so.
We've adopted a resolution.
Second. I was going to have Kevin.
Oh, sorry.
No, you got it. You did first, you did second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We are now on item 9.3. Receive a presentation on City of Elk Grove noise standards and provide direction as appropriate.
Let me just put a reminder to staff, the more demonstrative you are in your verbal descriptions, which might be appropriate for talking about noise standards. Just that our council's flying a little bit blind on monitors up there.
Maybe you can do some pantomime, you know, have your, you know?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Kurzgesner with the Development Services Department, Planning Division. Jose Mendez, the Code Enforcement Manager. Sarah Hunley, the Animal Services Manager. And I will be presenting on the city's current noise standards and the enforcement procedures as adopted in the city's general plan and the municipal code. So what is noise? Noise is often described as unwanted sound. This figure, which you cannot see unfortunately, shows the common noise levels associated with various noise sources. And loudness is measured on a logarithmic scale. That means its increase of 10 decibels results in a tenfold increase in sound intensity and a doubling of the perceived loudness. For example, a conversation is about 65 decibels and a jet taking off is 140 decibels. The perceived loudness of sound is dependent also on many factors. There is also subjectivity on the impacts of noise. For example, one person can think something is too loud, even though all the noise standards are met. The Elk Grove General Plan contains goals and policies related to noise. Goal N-1 says that sensitive uses are protected from noise intrusion, both transportation and non-transportation noise sources. Policy N1-1, new development of the uses listed in Table 8-3 shall conform with the noise levels contained in the table. All indoor and outdoor areas shall be located, constructed, and shielded from noise sources in order to achieve compliance with the city's noise standards. The general plan has Table 8-3, which includes the maximum allowable noise exposure for transportation noise sources. For residential uses, the maximum is 60 decibels for outdoor activity areas and 45 decibels for interior spaces. And this measurement is based on LDN, which is defined as the average over a 24-hour period. For office buildings, for example, the maximum decibels for the interior space is 45 LEQ. And that is measured in the typical worst-case hour. So LDN is over a 24-hour period and LEQ is based on an hour-long measurement. General Plan Figure 8-1 includes the future noise contours for transportation noises in the city. And staff uses this figure for the review of new development projects adjacent to roadways. For example, a new residential project located adjacent to the dark yellow color, which is a louder sound, would need to mitigate for noise in this area to have a noise at the 65-decibel rating, going back to Table 8-3. And it would likely need to include sound walls at the boundaries to meet that standard. So Table 8-4 includes the level performance standards for new projects that are affected by or including non-transportation noise sources. And this measurement is an hourly LEQ measurement. The daily maximum is 55 and the nighttime maximum is 45. So nighttime in this case is 10:00, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And this standard is carried over into the municipal code, Chapter 6.32, which I'll go over later in this presentation. So staff reviews new projects for consistency with these general plan policies. And noise is also included in our sequel review. So if a project is adjacent to residential and includes a noise generating use, such as amplified sound or a loading dock, or if it's a residential use, which is a sensitive receptor adjacent to an existing noise source, we require the applicant to submit a noise study as part of the project. And the noise study may include measurement of noise levels, other noise modeling, and may include mitigation measures such as walls or sound rated windows. So moving on to the municipal code. The City of Elk Grove finds that excessive unnecessary or offensive noises within the city is detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, and peace quiet of the inhabitants of the city and is therefore declared a public nuisance. Every person in the city is entitled to live in an environment free from excessive unnecessary or offensive noise levels. And the establishment of maximum permissible noise levels will further the public health, safety, welfare, and peace of city inhabitants. Similar to the general plan, there are noise maximums, 55, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and 45, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And there are also interior noise levels, and that is measured inside the property. And these depend on the land use. So for residential uses, the maximum is 45. And for office buildings, it's also 45. This mirrors what was adopted as part of the general plan. So within the chapter, there are also some noise that are exempt from these requirements, such as railroad activities, solid waste collection, as long as it's between 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM in a residential neighborhood, maintenance on residential property between certain hours. There are some prohibited activities as well included in this chapter, some construction noise between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM if it's located in proximity to residential uses, as well as public nuisance noise. This specifically does not include barking complaints, which we will discuss later in our presentation. And then general noise regulations. So the enforcement of Chapter 6.32 is with code enforcement. So Jose Mendez from the Code Enforcement Department will move on and discuss the enforcement procedures. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As indicated, code enforcement responds to these complaints. Typically, we respond by issuing a courtesy letter, depending on the source. We will investigate a complaint to determine if, if something is in violation. Some are pretty easy to determine. For example, construction noise occurring when hours are prohibited, that's a pretty easy violation. But if we have to conduct a decibel reading, which we have using a very specific device, the device requires calibration and also requires certain noise readings be taken in certain locations. Oftentimes, it's multiple readings. And so that's how we will determine if it's in violation. And if ultimately, if somebody is in violation, then they're subject to a violation of the, of the municipal code, either through a notice and order or through infraction. That's either a citation or an administrative penalty. We get about, on average, about 15 to 30 complaints a year. Currently, we're at about 15 complaints. Majority of the complaints start rising around the summertime or the, when the heat starts rising. A lot of that is related to construction noise. And that's because folks with construction don't want to work when it gets hot. And so they start a little earlier. And that's typically most of our common complaints. That actually is, concludes my part. And I'll pass it on to our Animal Services Manager.
Good evening, Sarah Hunley, the Animal Services Manager. So noises specific to animals are regulated under Title 8. And in that title, we define what a public nuisance is. And it means any animal that disrupts the peace by continuously and incessantly barking, howling, et cetera, that disturbs, any time during the day or night that disturbs any other person. And continuous and incessant is defined as frequent barking, howling, crying, or any other noise of 10 minutes or more during a 30-minute period. This is also enforced under, as if, if a violation does occur, it's enforced as an infraction under 1.04, the same as code enforcement's is. Animal Control is responsible for investigating complaints around animal noises. So our barking abatement process is a two-step process. And I'll go through that quickly. Step one, when a citizen makes a complaint about a noisy animal, usually their neighbor, we send a courtesy letter informing the animal owner of the noise complaint and asking them to abate that noise within 10 days. If after that 10-day period passes, the noise is still continuing and they have not abated the noise, the citizen gives a second complaint. And at that second complaint, that is the time that it begins our animal control investigation. So they sign a petition of a, a petition for abatement. And we ask them to provide bark logs. We ask them to keep bark logs for seven to 10 days, where they note the times and duration that they hear barking coming from the neighbors. We ask that they turn those into us within a 30-day timeframe so that we can timely investigate. Our animal control officers get assigned the case when we receive those logs back. And they will review those for a violation first and foremost in those timeframes. And then they will also look for times that they may go out and investigate. So they'll look for the kind of patterns of times that the dog tends to be barking. And as calls allow, they will go out and investigate. An investigation usually involves them going to the property and listening for barking for about 45 minutes to an hour. And they'll, they'll literally stopwatch-like time when they hear barking, and they'll note that. If a violation is found, 10 minutes within that 30-minute period, it would be enforced through an administrative citation. And if no violation is found, then the case is closed, there's no further action. As you can see, if you can see our table, you'll see that we typically have between 100 to 250 first complaints in the past three years. To date this year, we're kind of tracking about the same. We've had just under 100. And most of our cases do not proceed beyond that first complaint level. So hopefully, the courtesy letter tends to work and makes the neighbor aware of the issue, and they abate the barking nuisance. And then we've had between two so far this year to about 26 second full investigations for ASOs. I'm doing that. And, oh, there we go. That completes my part of the presentation. I can bring up the others if you guys have any questions, or I'm here to answer any questions as well.
What happens to the repeat offenders essentially?
So our, our code says that if, in a, if a nuisance that has been cited continues each day that the nuisance keeps occurring, can be a new offense and a new citation. So they could essentially be cited day after day.
So what's the penalty? Because I can't see anything.
It's an administrative citation. And so for a first citation, I believe it's about $100. A second citation, the price goes up to 200. And I think it tops out third consecutive at about $500, if I'm hopefully not mistaken on that. But so each day that the, that the nuisance continues would potentially be new tickets.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I don't know who it would go to, but I don't think it would be for you, Ms. Hunley. It's relative to outside amplified sound, music with amplifiers.
That could go to either of us.
Okay. All right. So, so the, the question is currently, you need to have, and correct me if I'm not saying it right. Let me make sure I'm corrected. You are required a conditional, a temporary use permit or a conditional use permit in order to have outside amplified sound, correct?
Generally, in most cases, yes.
Okay. So temporary, of course, being a short period of time, maybe five events or whatever. But a conditional use permit would be for longer-term use, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So as, when last I remembered, there was only one conditional use per, conditional use permit issued for outside amplified sound. And that was for a business out in far east Elk Grove. Are there any other businesses with a conditional use permit for outside amplified sound?
So for outdoor amplified sound, we also allow that through our design review process for like, say, a new restaurant, something like, say, Dust Bowl. They were allowed to have outdoor amplified sound, but not like Sheldon Inn where it's a performance. It's more of ambient music, where the condition requires them to comply with Chapter 6.32, which is our outdoor noise ordinance, which Sarah mentioned earlier. So that, it can happen. It doesn't necessarily need to be through a CUP, but it has to be through some planning process, either CUP or design review. But the design review is more for an ambient sound for a seating area, whereas a CUP would be more for a performance-based outdoor amplified sound.
So are there any, aside from the one business far out east and Dust Bowl, are there any other businesses in Old Town or anywhere else that are allowed to have outside amplified sound?
To my knowledge, those are the ones that are covered by either a CUP or designer view.
Only those two.
Well, I'll go on the wayback machine. McCooney's patio back in 2006.
Okay.
We did, I think it was a Meyer Design Review for the amplified sound on the patio. And I think there were some neighbor complaints at one point that may have been resolved.
All right. Because, and I'm, I'm not trying to embarrass any businesses. I just want to, there was, there was another that was in Old Town Elk Grove that was going through the process. They, they stopped that process?
Yes.
Yes, that was withdrawn.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Is there more presentation or was that it?
No, that's the end of the presentation. No action is recommended tonight. It was just a presentation, and council may provide further direction as desired.
All right. Were there any other comments, questions, direction?
Has there been any citations that have reached the $500 level?
Typically, we educate and inform the businesses first, or anyone violating the code. The courtesy letter really provides the education that there is a threshold. They can't exceed certain decibel levels. That brings like 95% compliance. We, we will conduct a noise reading if we have to. We'll share that information with the business or the person that's violating the code. We will issue a citation, which the first citation is at $100. And that usually generates compliance.
And that's for dogs as well?
To my knowledge, in my tenure, I don't believe we've issued a $500 citation, no.
Thank you.
Councilmember Suen?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, since probably a lot of these, if it's an animal barking, I would just say. Barking is usually going to happen late at night. How do you verify decibels if, you know, regular person isn't going to have, you know, that, that device? So how, how would you go about verifying the decibels from, from complaints at that point?
So the nuisance, the nuisance noise under the animal ordinance? Does not include decibel readings at all. It's all about time and duration.
Okay. So the complaint, if someone said, hey, I'm, it's, this is, this dog's barking. So the complaint, if someone said, hey, this is, this dog's barking for 11 minutes in a 30-minute period, that's all you need to?
That would be a violation, yes. And so if a complaint happens, I kind of think you put this as part of your question, too. If a complaint happens outside of ASO duty hours, did you ask about that as well?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
If a complaint happens outside of ASO duty hours, and usually we can see that in the bark logs, too, and we kind of know that the case is going to be handled, we ask the citizen to provide evidence to the ASO officer for us. So that can be written logs, that can be a recording of 10 minutes of barking happening in a 30-minute time period. We're not too picky about what we'll accept. We just need something that is reasonable, and they have to be willing to attest that it was that dog, they recorded it, it all happened, you know, it's not a doctored recording, et cetera. So because if a citizen appeals the citation, it would go to an administrative hearing, and so they would have to present the evidence that they collected.
Okay. Thank you.
And so one last one, then. But as the city, we cannot or will not do that recording, correct?
No, we don't, especially if it's happening during hours that the ASOs are not on duty.
Sure.
If it's during hours that we have an ASO on duty, they'll go out and listen, I'm sorry, listen and record and like stopwatch it?
Sure, but they're not doing an actual record.
No, we don't, because, I mean, we would accept, you know, your voice recording on your iPhone.
Perfect.
That would be fine.
So for the actual device itself, that's only something that our ASOs would do during business hours, but residents, it's not something that they can request and would receive on demand, is it?
We don't use the device that code enforcement uses for decibel level readings, no. We don't have a specific recording device.
If I could explain, so the code for excessive noise requires a reading of ambient noise, and so we have to read ambient noise to determine if that noise is exceeding the ambient noise. If it is, and it's exceeding the threshold, then we can determine a noise, a violation of that section. It's very different than the barking dog requirement.
Yeah, because for the barking, for the barking portion, the duration of the barking, the only way that we would know as residents, if it's beyond that eight-to-10-minute threshold, is by recording it ourselves and timing it and doing active bark logs. How long is that bark, do we have to record those bark logs for a 30-day consecutive period?
No, we ask that you do bark logs for seven to 10 days, and most of that is so that we can see the patterns and frequencies and go out, send an officer out at the most likely time that we're probably going to hear the nuisance barking. So we're trying to catch them, catch the dog in the act.
Because in some cases, it may just be more than one, it could be more than one dog, and it's the constant, it's the constancy of it. And whether it's every 30 minutes or every hour, it's something where the individual themselves, depending on if they're sleeping at night or if they have a loved one sleeping during the day, it's trying to capture that because there's no set routine or period. You just, when it happens, it happens. And so it's one of those issues where we have the standards in place, but it's just mitigating against that type of activity, that type of behavior, because as an individual, the last thing you want to do is to have a confrontation with your neighbor. It's trying to have some sort of avenue to where you can basically show and provide warning so the neighbor has better habits of being a good owner to their dog or dogs.
Yeah. And I believe that's why we see a lot of first-time complaints, and they get that courtesy letter. It brings it to their attention. It gives them ideas on how to abate the barking nuisance. And for a lot of people, I think it, you know, they bring their dog inside more quickly if they hear it barking, because they know that it's caused a complaint. And so that's why I think our data show that we see a lot of first complaints and not nearly as many second complaints that say this barking is still continuing and it's not been abated.
And it's definitely, if you have a second or it escalates, and you only have two incidences, it's not anything where the person is being resistant, or are they being resistant?
It could depend on the case, honestly. But we are not able to cite them unless there's that violation of at least 10 minutes of barking in a 30-minute time period.
Have we cited?
So it does end up being usually a lot of just education and a little bit of courtesy interactions to help the neighbor see that they need to do some things to reduce that or abate that nuisance.
Got it.
Because even, you know, it's a nuisance whether it, we understand it's a nuisance to people, whether it meets that threshold or not. And so we do try and do some interference and educate out in the community.
Good. Got it.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Did you have a follow-up?
My question was answered.
Okay, very good. Well, I see this is not to provide direction as appropriate. I don't see anybody looking to expand anything, and I didn't see any staff recommendations to make any changes. Seems like we have a good system in place, you know. So there's going to, you know, I think I know where some of this stems from, from one of our constituents that flagged this initially. And hopefully, they're able to navigate through this with, you know, a repeat offender dog and be able to catalog that, log it, and use the appropriate steps. Are there situations here where you have, there's noncompliance, you have a resident that basically is ignoring the citations, and it's ongoing? What do you do with that?
During my tenure, that has not occurred. I believe the city would have to discuss perhaps other nuisance abatement procedures. We'd probably have to get the city attorney's office involved in that.
I mean, at some point, you could go to court and get an injunction that we have judicial remedies. They'd be subject to penalties, contempt.
But we don't have that situation, it sounds like.
We don't seem to have that, no.
Okay. All right. Well, good to know. Thank you for the presentation and...
Quick question. Has there been any like facilitation between the Animal Control Services and neighbors, or is that, again, going through the judicial process?
So if two neighbors can't agree, right, and there's ongoing conflict, I get that on many things, on if it's not a dog, it's something else. To what extent do we get involved?
I would say if the barking animal, or it could be an animal of any kind, we've had a parrot before be a nuisance animal, but usually it's barking. And if the barking dog is not technically violating our ordinance, we're not able to cite, we would have to push the two neighbors toward more other civil remedies, perhaps like mediation in the courts or things like that.
Sure.
Yes, Mayor, we do the, through our POP program, we would have, we do have, actually, our POP officers go out, make contact with the neighbors. That's typically what it is. Sometimes it stems from a different incident, and it just kind of expands. And then it's the dogs, and then it's your garbage cans in front of my house. So it's all the other things that we often see when there are neighbor disputes, and we do try to get our committee-oriented police officers out there. They're able to hopefully mediate the problems, and that tends to mitigate some of the issues that we've seen with some of those neighbors.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, well, thank you for your presentation. No further questions. All right, we will move on to our council comments, reports, future agenda items. Start to the right, Councilmember Rubliss.
Yes. So I just got back from a conference named Naleo, which is the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. It was a pretty good conference where we had several conversations regarding Latinos and then kind of the way that it's going throughout this country. Some of the workshops that I attended, just wanted to talk about that. It was health and social needs for our nation's aging Latino population, disruptive models to accelerate job entry, and AI 101, which was really interesting, and just working and seeing how different cities and different states are utilizing AI in order to kind of improve their city. Also sat on a couple of school board panels, which was interesting to kind of see how that's going and kind of the future of education. So just wanted to report that out, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spies?
Two things. First, the search for an executive director for the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission continues, so we're looking hard for that. The second short thing, I'll leave some meat on the bone for you, Madam Mayor, but we both had the opportunity to serve on the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Our last meeting spoke a lot to roads and road conditions throughout Sacramento County. It was enviable to be Elk Grove in the room, because due to our public works and our budgeting, we are doing very, very well with roads relative to the rest of the county. So I want to make sure that I give kudos, of course, to, you know, the folks who make the money happen, the folks who put the tar on the roads, operations and maintenance to make it happen, because we were in a very enviable spot. So with that, I'll leave it there and...
I don't know if there's any more meat left in there. Vice Mayor?
No, I don't have a whole lot to report. I just know it's like the Sacramento Public Library, JPA met, or the Joint Powers Agreement Board met a couple of weeks ago. We adopted a budget, but we also ratified the agreement for the library employees. It's all good outcomes for everyone involved, and I definitely enjoyed being a part of this month's Juneteenth activities and the Black Youth Leadership Project graduation that took place on Sunday.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report for SECOG, as part of the normal practice that we go around the region to hold meetings. And last meeting, we were up in Yuba City, and it was really delight to see Sutter County and the mayor of Yuba City, Sean Harris, hosting us up there. It's a beautiful community as well, and I look forward to the meeting that we will host here, hopefully, in the near future. Thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah, STA definitely enviable with our PCI index being so high, and unfortunately, our friends in the county, it's not the same story. So great work, staff, just continuous investment and making quality of life a top priority for our community. So thank you for everyone for that. And last but not least, just a shout-out and happy birthday to our vice mayor.
Yeah.
It's his actual birthday today.
Happy birthday, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Do you want to sing? Darren Wilson really wants to sing, so please lead us.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ron. Happy birthday to you.
All right.
You make 30 look great.
With that, we won't see each other again until next month.
Dang, you're old.
So have a happy and safe Fourth of July, and have a restful vacation for those that are enjoying some of the summer break. We will see you all in less than a month.
Less than a month.
No, less. We will adjourn at 8:15. Thank you.